So, while all that's going through the warrant here so we can get the bills paid by the end of the week, this is a point of reference, we should be making the last payment on the comments. So that will be lock, stock and barrel. I'll fund it with that. Great. Bills are paid. Success. All right, get that done. Paulette, do you have a problem as much as possible by then trying to take care of when everybody that was here to approve minutes and then trying to wait?
Okay.
So, we can skip the minutes and maybe put that even though we got a budget meeting next week, we can try to catch up then?
I would, yeah. That'd be good. Yep.
Next up.
So we leave Monday, 14th or something?
14th.
Okay.
May even have the ones from tonight. So now we can move right into appointments. Richard Pray, winter maintenance of village sidewalks, and I think it's probably more than just Richard. So let's have a discussion.
Have a discussion.
Yeah, I requested that we get some time in the agenda. I appreciate you bringing us on these things. And I wonder if anyone would like a copy of the information that we put out? Betty, you have one? Select Board has one?
Yeah.
Wait, Betty? So there's been some discussion, as you know, about the need for removing the snow from the sidewalks in the village. This is just the village, the main street. And so we thought we'd try to put some numbers to that to give an idea of what's involved. Before we did that, we went to, Tom Poison went to the town of Conway. If you flip this over, you'll see what he wrote up about what Conway's doing. He talked to the road boss there and they use a Kubota with a four-foot snow thrower, front-mounted, and they do all the sidewalks in the village of Conway. And according to Mr. Sweet, it's about two hours to do that. This year, they do not blow it into a truck. But next year, they're thinking they'll probably do that, have a truck go alongside and blow the snow into the truck to remove it right away. There had been some complaints, snow on the property, et cetera, with certain residences. And...
Oh, now, excuse me.
Yep.
I would imagine that's just in the village area.
Yes.
You can direct it most 90% of down there. You can sort of the fields and stuff, right?
Yes, only just a few places. Who does it? The Highway Department. They tried to get to it a few days after the storm. So it's not their first priority. Their first priority is the roads. Have there been any liability issues? And he said, no, not that he was aware of. Do they spread any materials for de-icing afterwards? And at the current time this year, they have not done it, but they're looking into it because there is a need for that. Conway does other things with this machine. They snow blow open cat's basins, chip brush, roadside mowing, sweeping, et cetera. So other towns are doing this, and, you know, for good reason. If you just turn to the other side, some points that we'd like to consider are sidewalks help to support village commerce. You can park at the post office and walk to the hardware store if the sidewalk, and only if the sidewalk, is open. Otherwise, you have to get back in your car, drive, or you're gonna walk in the middle of the street. Second point, not everyone drives. I think we forget that sometimes. And even if you do drive, parking is really quite limited given our village. And particularly, it gets even more limited with the snow, as we've seen this past winter. The third thing is, of course, pedestrians walking in the roadway is an issue of public safety. And here, we in Asheville, we now have sidewalks for most all of the entire village on both sides of the road. So we did some measurement. It's about six tenths of a mile from Decker down to Meadow Lane. The sidewalk width is five feet. There are four crosswalks that would need to be maintained. Total service area, estimated time to remove snow, talks to some various contractors, somewhere in the order of three to four hours, depending. You can never say what, you know, one storm's different than another, of course. Labor rate, anywhere from $100 to $150 an hour for a machine and operator if we were to go with an independent contractor. What's the average number of storms per winter? That's hard to say. This year, Mike, what'd you say, 18?
I think I should have come before you. I think I thought 18.
Yeah. If we did de-ice material, there's different materials available. We'd also, you know, we would wanna do some environmentally friendly material. There's a product that Crop Reduction Services has for 422 a ton. You might get applications, some places it's not needed, in other places it is. Somewhere between 300 and 1,200 pounds per application. I think you could figure about $100 a storm in materials for, if we were to choose to do that. Equipment, if we were to purchase equipment, we, Mike graciously rented a piece of equipment and invited the Select Board to come over and take a look at it. This is something from...
Crop.
From Orchard Quest, Oesco. And that was an articulated tractor with a front-mounted snow thrower, and approximate cost of that is about $40,000. It could be that you could get a used one for a little less than that. The town might wanna do that. Let's look at our options. Town could purchase this equipment, could purchase it new for $40,000, possibly use it for other uses. Tom Poison has looked into that and thought there could be some other uses for it. There would be a worker probably needed or two for that. That's one option. Another option would be perhaps to lease that equipment. Perhaps we could look into leasing and save some money. Another option, second option here, we list this, independent contractor. We have a number of contractors who have expressed interest in this. And we've talked to a few of them, and it seems like a reasonable figure for per storm would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $400. We have a petition that's gonna go before the town on town meeting day on the warrant that asks the town to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to remove the snow in the village. So if it was saying, let's say, all we did was plow or snow throw at $400 a storm, maybe that's an option that we'd like to consider. Maybe that would be a trial basis. Maybe we'd get through most of the winter with that $5,000. That might be a start. Maybe that would be a way to begin the process and see how it works out, see the problems involved. But what we'd like tonight is if the Select Board would discuss it and perhaps consider what they might recommend at town meeting, or if you want, take a vote on it now and go ahead and make it something that would be something that we plan to do next year for small change. Well, $5,000, it's not small change, but in the light of, I know all the things that are going on with the town in terms of increased expenses, it doesn't seem like a lot of money to provide for the town in a way that would really be a benefit for all the citizens. Nancy, do you wanna add to this?
I've always, I mean, I've talked to different finance and Select Board people for years, and it's just really been time to do something. I've never thought that this would be something that the Highway Department would take on, but that's the direction of town months ago. To me, that's more than what we need. I'm leaning towards, I think the contracting out is a simpler solution. We don't necessarily need to be investing more equipment now as a town. I still maintain it's a community sidewalk. It's a community endeavor. Those of us who remove snow from in front of our properties will probably continue to do that. So I don't even know if the whole six tenths will have to be done by somebody from the outside. But we have to have both sides open so people can access this community. It's just time. So however you wanna handle it, I was reminded a couple weeks back that we did vote in as seasonal walks, and my petition, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but the petition is requesting year-round maintenance and to set aside the $5,000.
Well, I set Mary when this petition came in. I set Mary onto a task, which I think took up way more time than was ever expected.
All tasks do.
But it turns out this discussion happened over a long time.
Yes, well, what'd you say, it took about 30 years to get sidewalks? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When you went back through all the notes. And it was my opinion that there was a vote that they were seasonal sidewalks. And all the research that's been done on the town clerk and Mary and Fennett, more hours than they probably should have, going through this over about a 10-year period while this was all being discussed. And although it was presented in discussions, and that's probably the best thing that we've got here, is in discussions that this was the Select Board minutes from October 7th of 2002. It was... If the bids are too high, the Meadow Lane portion will be cut. They will be three-season sidewalks. That wasn't just in the discussion. Said Susan visited everyone who had a concern and brought them back to the Select Board. They did consider their concerns, but it didn't say in the minutes. And so I remember that discussion. I mean, there were a number of public hearings and so forth at that time. But, so it was more of a discussion, not a vote.
Well, it came to annual town meeting.
It did come to annual town meeting, and that was...
In retrospect, I remember audible laughter when we discussed at annual town meeting that they would be three-season sidewalks. I mean, there may have been some practicality to it for political reasons at that time, because a lot of people on Main Street didn't want to have to lose half their front yards. And a lot of people on Main Street, when I discussed this with them over the past month or so, "You mean, you're going to this town meeting, so we have to maintain it?" I said, "No, I want it to be the town, community thing, that Main Street people feel put upon that they might have to maintain these like in larger towns or cities." That is not my intent.
These are minutes, this other side of minutes go back to November 27th of 95, talking about sidewalks. But in there, I don't really see that it talked about seasonal. But it did say about committees being set up and so forth.
I think the seasonal was an idea, and I think it was political, and that's why it resolved something then. It's just time to move forward. It resolved that if they were seasonal, then Main Street residents would not have to maintain them like they do in larger communities. There are some larger communities you could find if you don't. There are some state laws. If somebody slips in front of your law, you're liable as a business. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff, but that is in Asheville.
So prior to this sidewalk conversation in 2002, and I have to admit, I did not walk the length of town prior to 2002. Were we talking about dirt paths?
That's what we had.
Going from a dirt path to actual sidewalks, then you get into the issue with like larger towns, where you have to go and remove the snow on the sidewalk in front of your property, kind of thing. And when it was a dirt path, nobody felt that that was an issue, but when it became sidewalks, that somehow made it a little bit different.
Yes.
The road was also wider.
Yes, the road was wider once upon a time. This is also a factor.
The who was wider?
The road was wide at once upon a time.
Didn't have the curves in it? The original Main Street didn't have those curves, which narrowed up, actually narrowed up the road.
So now, you know, we only park on one side of the road. Because if we were to park on both sides of the road, no one could get by. But it used to be both sides of the road. And it was just to generate more room to walk as well.
If there was no edging and a curve, you just parked your tires on the grass, I suppose. So that's how actually everything fit.
When we got the, first put the curves in, there was a lot of tires sold, those edges.
Mr. Carr, those edges were very sharp.
They weren't rounded up or...?
No. Just so you know, I mean, Article 1, you know, this was, I can't even find the date. Special Town Meeting, June of 2002. This, it happened to be the first article of that special town meeting to see if the town would vote to appropriate and transfer from available sums in the treasury a sum of money to be used for expenses related to pedestrian enhancement project.
Ooh.
That could have been makeup or something.
A P E P.
Yeah.
P E P. Okay, so that's what, that's all the research really led us to, but at least a town was made to do it. So you have given us the petition?
Yes.
We really don't have a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of input on that until we get to town meeting floors to, as to, you know, we're not able to change the wording and so forth.
It can be amended on the floor like anything else, but...
Oh, sure, 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 sure. But, so the wording, to see if the town would vote to request the Select Board establish a year-round maintenance policy for our sidewalks, including winter snow removal, and to raise appropriate or transfer $5,000 into an account for that purpose.
Right, because we'd have to make them four-season sidewalks, and that would be a job of the Select Board. So I'm requesting that the Select Board takes some action.
Now, with this being at 5,000, if you multiply 400 times the estimate, the high end of the 20 storms, that's really $8,000.
Yes.
So this can't be really increased on the floor, because that's a substantial change. It would be up to the moderator. But I know sometimes you can make small changes, but that's more significant.
Nancy's pretty significant.
So...
Well, I think Richard and I, Richard and I haven't necessarily agreed on the approach on this. I don't think who's ever doing it is gonna have to do every square foot of the sidewalks. So I think it could be done in less time. Because when they get to certain parts, it's already done, because people have already, Asheville House always clears. I always clear. The library hires somebody to clear. Elmer's is taken care, there's huge swaths that are taken care of, but it's the ones that aren't that are absolute barriers of getting from one end to town the other.
I was just thinking, if something is going down the sidewalk, it's not like it's going to hop over a section that's already been plowed.
No, but it can cruise, no, it can cruise through, cruise on by. There's another issue of hydrants, that hydrants, when they are cleared of the snow from the road, the hydrant snow can't just be pushed into the sidewalk, which has happened innumerable times.
Not since I've been running.
That's good, but it has happened, where we get a sidewalk clean, the one in particular is in front of gray roofs, he always clears. He gets it nice and clean, then somebody takes care of the hydrant, and the snow's back on the sidewalk. I mean, there's just some really unthinking activity around this.
I was gonna ask.
Yep.
Doesn't that, is it a question for the town regarding ADA access? And considering that there may be a development for elderly housing in the village, if somebody can't get down safely down the street in the winter, or should say down the sidewalk, and they've gotta use the street, doesn't that then say, well, maybe we shouldn't have any more elderly housing or senior housing, because it would have to be seasonal senior housing? I mean, I saw a form, this is piled.
It almost sounds comical when you say it, but it's very, it's... It's, I mean, when you start doing this, it opens up an entire can of worms. There's more can of worms to it.
I understand, but if it's an ADA complaint, that's a federal thing. And what happens then if somebody comes along and they're mobility impaired, just cannot navigate the snowbanks? I mean, I've been there, and I've had that problem myself. But when I see folks who are, you know, 70, 75, and they're just trying to get their mail, and they can't safely get their mail, or go to Country Pie, or, you know, when you say that, gee, you know, somebody's sliding under a car, they get hit, they get hit, that's one insurance bill versus finding a way to keep them clear and as safe as possible. I don't know.
It's a huge, I mean, I just keep thinking it's a bigger issue. Sometimes I get thinking they're bigger issues than they really are, but, Mike, you had it.
There's a few other things. For example, we're gonna have to add something to the people, or, I don't know how we, don't ask me how we're gonna do it, but, you know, if somebody goes through and does the sidewalks, and then somebody goes through and opens up a driveway and blocks the sidewalk again, I mean, who's, who, people are gonna know that once the sidewalks are done, it's their responsibility to keep them clear. One, I don't know, don't ask me how we'd write that up. And also, there's places where an awful lot of people share pushing snow, large amounts of snow are piled where sidewalks are in three or four places on Main Street. The town pushes there, and Elmer's pushes there, and Country Pie, you know, lots of, you know, wherever. There's sidewalks that get blocked in front of the church, they get blocked big time, where people are gonna have to change where they push snow. And at places, for example, like Elmer's, there's not a lot of choices where to push snow. The town comes around and sweeps around that corner and pushes right up on the lawn beside, it's, you know, they pile the snow there, so...
And I'm not saying it's insurmountable, these issues. I really don't think that they're insurmountable. But what I'm concerned about more than the snow removal is once the snow's removed, how to keep the sidewalks clear. Because I use the sidewalk pretty much every day. And they, when you really look at them, they weren't at all designed with any type of winter maintenance in mind because there's no drainage. Right? And you take a day, you get it, you have your sidewalk open in a nice shape, and you get a couple of nice, we didn't have it this year, but if you got a couple of nice January thaws, and it all runs to the sidewalk, then the sidewalk is more dangerous, but open with the ice. So, you know, who's responsible to use it to get that ice material on there?
That's what I asked.
It's quite, it's quite a little responsibility there, and it almost seems to me that if the town got involved in doing it, there's a certain amount of wisdom in it being all or nothing.
That, when I met, I went down and met with the town of Conway about it, just because I was, and that was one of my big questions. I said, "What about south and sanding and that kind of stuff?" Because, you know, just like any other circus, it's gonna get slippery. And they said, "We don't do it." I said, "Well, what happens if somebody follows him?" And I said, "Did you talk to your town council and say, 'Whose responsibility is this'?" And he said, "Not that I know of," but he says, "We don't do it." And they've been doing it for, I guess this is, I think this is their second year.
I think you can understand my concern.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, another thing, you know, how long have I been snow blowing out here from town hall to church? And once you get the sun shining and hitting, the first thing to open up is that sidewalk, you know, it's black.
Right, but there's a whole bunch of sidewalks this way that the sun can't get to, because there's houses on the south side. You know, so the sidewalks on the north side, all those houses and the library, and the sun just doesn't get in.
The worst portion of the street for snow blowing would be from the, from the library to Elmer's. That's the worst, that section of sidewalk would be the worst part of it.
But the opposite side?
What's that?
But the opposite side?
The opposite side against sun, the opposite side would be, but then there's another issue. That was another issue that I've been with. There are places on Main Street, one in particular, where vehicles are, and I'm not, it's been that way for a million years, and I'm not saying they shouldn't do that, I'm not one, but there's vehicles parked right across the sidewalk in front of a few houses. What do you do? I mean, that would be the easiest side of the sidewalk to keep clear, but I'm not gonna tell them they can't park their vehicles there. They've been parking their vehicles there for 40, 50, 60 years. So what are we gonna do, tell them they can't do that? I don't think so.
I did notice that the state's boundary marker is on, you know, the sidewalk is within, most of the way, I'm sure it's within the state highway boundary. Now, what that has to do with anything, I'm not really sure, but... I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the one is up on my end of the street, but I know right across the street, it's right under the hedge here. But here's the bigger question. The warrant article, I think, or it's a bigger question to me. As far as I can see, that's fine. Have you had any idea of where the $5,000 would come from, and maybe the $5,000 that would be needed beyond that? Because right now, we have a pretty ambitious budget, and we're about $180,000 out of balance with only about $160,000 worth of free cash. And we're 100, call it $181,000 out of budget, out of balance. And we've already used some free cash, and it looks like we have $156,000 left.
This is the current budget. I won the meetings. It was proposed that the Highway Department Winter Fund get added to.
Yeah, what we did is we took a three-year average of what the expenditures are, and we took that number.
And if I were in your shoes, I would have $5,000 of that go towards this project, because that's the fund that can always be played with at the end of the year. And it gives us a chance to see how this will work, if it will work at all, and go from there.
I appreciate your optimism. Problem with that, I mean, you know, I mean, that, this year, we were very fortunate. We had $322,000 worth of free cash when it got certified.
Right.
Awesome.
Right.
Right, wonderful.
Right.
The pessimist in me is always saying, "Well, next year it'll probably only be 140." It'll be probably somewhere in between, is my guess, but it would only be a guess.
Right.
Only be a guess.
Right.
But we did, we took it from 80, winter roads... Winter Roads so far, we took from $85,000 to, I believe, $110. And that, like I said, was a three-year average of what we forgot. Am I right on that, Ted? I'm pretty sure I'm right on that.
Say it again, Tom.
$110,000 in Winter Roads is what we have budgeted right now. But, you know, we're still looking to try to cut $70,000 or $80,000 out of this. That's what... Because we don't wanna be spent down to zero for the action.
Right. And that's what I've been told every year that I've come to talk to different select board members and finance committee members.
We're all cut from the same cloth.
I know. It's a problem. And I believed that we ran a very tight ship until that $285,000 greater last year. If we can go into debt for a $285,000 greater and use up a chunk of free cash last year, then somehow, this can be done. This really can be done. It's a matter of will.
So you would... And I could think of, it would be to check with town council for some of these questions. If the town assumes responsibility, one way or the other, for removing the snow from those sidewalks, be it through an independent contractor or doing it itself, we would want to know what liability, if anybody, when, you know, I'm walking down the sidewalk, and I slip and I fall, and I break my leg, and somebody wants recourse back to the town because it was icy, hadn't been sanded or salted or something, where is the town in relationship to that? Because if you do remove the snow on both sides, you're bound to get more traffic.
And then, if the other side's going, what happens if somebody's walking down the street? We have perfectly good sidewalks that are not clear. Or if somebody's walking down the street and gets hit, or riding in a wheelchair and gets hit, or some kid standing waiting for the school bus up the street gets hit, what's our liability there?
I think we just wanna know the answer to the question here. At least I do, from town council. I mean, you can almost believe that you're somehow responsible. It is, you would think that if the town has made best effort to keep it open and sandy and salted, that it's not like we just left it that way for somebody to actually have fault.
Usually, it's an issue of proven negligence.
Right.
When I follow different incidents like this in other towns.
I just don't. I think, I appreciate the work you did and the research. It just doesn't seem to me that... If you go with my idea that it's all or nothing, but I think if you had one person taking care of all the sidewalks, I can't believe on a normal winter that it would be much less than 15 hours a week.
Normal winter, 15 hours a week.
Which means that maybe this one was a little extreme. But you'd have to have somebody to scratch some sand or some type of traction material, if not a melter. I mean, you're right on something environmentally. I mean, you wouldn't wanna put a lot of salt on it because you wouldn't have any sidewalks left.
I was figuring three to four hours of storm. That's just snowblowing. That's no sanding, no nothing. That's just... That was before ending in whatever... I have questions about any stuff that that was ever brought up.
You know, you take an inch and a half storm, if we're taking care of it where it may not get blown, you know, the town would have to, you know, you'd have to take care of that. You'd have to take care of that. And we know ice, you know, sometimes you can move snow a whole lot cheaper than you can manage ice, so.
I did look into a different type of material. And, you know, there are a number of different materials that will melt. The very best is calcium chloride. And it does not degrade the sidewalk, if it's a cured sidewalk. Sodium chloride will. And mesium chloride is not so bad either. And then there's combinations with urea that make them even more effective over a wider temperature range. So there are some good ice melts available. They're not cheap.
Urea is what they use at most airports.
Anticorrosive, so. Or non-corrosive. And it doesn't have to be done in all places. You know, as we're talking, there's the shady side of the street, which happens to be the south side of the street, and the sunny side of the street, which is the north side. And if we had a contiguous path, if one person was doing this, one, somebody overlooking it, to provide, to think about, what if someone wants to walk from one end of the street down to get her mail to the post office? How could she go? Maybe crossing the street at some places where it's icy, across the crosswalk to the shady, to the sunny side, and then back over. And there ought to be a way to do that. That could be taken into account.
I'm open to that, but at the same time, I wonder, once you got set up to do it, what would you really say? Once you got set up and you had, you know, the machine and the people, what would really be... Really be said here, from going up one side of the street to coming down the other?
So, if this is the annual town meeting, and we can vote in favor of setting aside $5,000, then we would need to find the $5,000 somehow in the budget to set it aside. Some way, somehow, is really going to be where that would all take place. Even if the budget we had at that time didn't have five, then we'd have to go back and do something on the floor at that time to come up with the five, because it's an unfunded five.
We'd have to name that account, you know, somewhere to get that. And, right, you wouldn't have to dog all the i's and cross all the t's until the day before the assessors wanted to set the tax rate.
Right, but I'm talking about at the annual town meeting. If this is there, and there is no $5,000 in the budget, then that is something to be organized after the fact. Or on the floor, as everybody's voting at the annual town meeting, some $5,000 has to move somewhere, somehow, to fund it.
Well, I'm somewhat attracted to Nancy's proposal to think about taking this small amount of $5,000 from Winter Roads and maybe divert it towards something like this. Particularly if this view is kind of a one-year trial, to see just how this works. I think a lot of what we're talking about here is still in the area of speculation. My concern, from a finance standpoint, is looking at the overall budget. And Tom's mentioning that we're about $180,000 some thousand dollars out of balance here. Caused me to do a calculation. If we pay for all the things that we're now talking about and used up what free cash we needed, but needing some kind of a reserve, a minimum reserve, say $50,000 in free cash for some unanticipated event, that would, I think, require us, unless we come up with something creative by way of cutting more than what we've already talked about, we'd have some requirement, I think, to go into our stabilization account, perhaps, to make this all work, and afford everything we think we wanna do. And then you're up to something that, if you looked at the remaining stabilization funds, which would probably be able to go to about $310,000, let's say, plus $50,000 in free cash. If you put those two together, that's in effect our reserve financial condition. And that is a percentage of the overall budget, which is now shaping up to be on the order of $4.4 million. We'd be down to about a little over eight and a half percent, which is not too bad. We've set a target in the finance committee that we're gonna propose to the select board that we try to keep the combination of our stabilization fund and our free cash together in a 10 to 15% range of the overall budget as a way of having some kind of a financial fly we want to take care of exigencies as they come up. And we think 10 to 15% is a good range. We started out this year at a very advantageous point, being at around an 18% range, which is pretty impressive. But we've used up a lot of that money in terms of what we anticipate for vocational education expenses, for example, coming up this year. That's a big surprise to us. It's a big, big amount. There are a number of other things we've talked about. So if you went down to something like eight and a half percent, so it's not, the bottom's not dropped out necessarily. It's tight. And I think we'd have to be really cautious about taking this on. But in the scheme of things, a $5,000 amount, if that would lead to some kind of a reasonable trial, seems to me we could find a place for that somewhere else in the budget. That is, the hurt some funds from Winter Roads or somewhere else.
So, sorry, but another thing to take into consideration, I think. So we do find a lot of this money, either myself or some other contractor in town, or the town has to come up with the equipment to do it. Sure, I've been doing the big sections with my big tractor, with a seven-foot snowblower on the back of it, because that, those are the only sections that I can easily back down and do. But I'd have to go out and buy, I'd have to... If I did it, I'd have to come up with a smaller piece of equipment. You know, I would go out and buy myself a small four-wheel drive cabin closed tractor to do it. So I'd go out and spend $25,000 on a tractor and get a snowblower for it and that kind of stuff, for a $5,000 trial for the town. Maybe we'd have to find, you know, some other contractor. But maybe there is some contractor that has a small tractor that'd like to leave up here and do that. The town doesn't wanna go and spend $25,000 on a tractor, I would think.
My concern with the five is short. And that's okay. It's where I started at five. Because if you really figure the maximum number of storms, we haven't factored in any money for ice removal, whatever product we use. So I think in our minds, even though we do the five, we have to probably realize that that would end up needing to be augmented with a special town meeting sometime next year.
Just like one of the boroughs does.
Yeah.
But not to put too fine. The point of it, that's the slippery slope, I think, here. Hey, the minute you get into this, and I take Mike's point to heart, because I came up and looked at that piece of equipment. That was a, I remember a $30,000 to $35,000 range piece of equipment. Very handsome little machine that does some pretty nifty stuff. But if the town or some contractor's gonna have to buy that, and the town, for example, we've talked about the Highway Department, various iterations of this discussion, if the town's gonna buy a piece of equipment like that and then think, "Well, we need another person to run this," or at least a part-time person, then you're in a big personnel cost, plus a piece of equipment. And it suddenly gets pretty dramatically expensive all of a sudden. And I don't know whether a $5,000 amount would lead to anything significant, but it would allow you to at least try out, maybe for only part of the season, how well this does. And we, I think, understand better thereafter what kind of financial consequences you're gonna be up against. I think the de-icing is one of the big issues. The minute you clear the ice, or the snow, the first, you know, the first cut, it looks pretty decent. But then you have a couple of freezes the night, a couple nights thereafter, then you get sort of, you know, little tracks that have iced up, and it's uneven, and... Then you have your ice melt and all kinds of chemical treatments, and I don't know what causes it.
I appreciate your thoughts, Ted, but I think there's a flaw. Is that you use the word trial.
Yep.
And if the town votes this petition,
Yep.
I think once that switch is flipped, you will never unflip it. I think once we go down that slippery slope, you're at the bottom.
What happens?
You're in it. You're in it up to your neck. I really think once you start that, it's...
Yep, possibly. What would happen if we just said, "Look, okay, we're gonna say $5,000. And when that $5,000 is gone, that'll be our test. That'll be the end of it. If it works out, fine. If it doesn't look like it's gonna work out, that's the end of it. But we tested it." And I, it's not, I... Sure, I've been doing it for a long time. I would just assume it'd be part of that test, you know? I would, I'd take an investment in the town to do that. I would come up with some piece of equipment to deal with. And it's not like I think I'm gonna make a whole bunch of money off it. But that, it would be a fun thing to do.
And Mike, I don't know if people say it often enough, but all the things you do in town are appreciated in no way. And I don't know how many times people say that out loud, but this is a good opportunity.
Here, here.
Yes.
One point, because I don't understand. Is it still, or is it state law? Does that apply to everybody's property for clearing the sidewalks in winter? And if it did, could it be that money could be put for property owners who were short of funds to keep their sidewalks clear to go to the town and apply for a grant? In other words, they're still responsible, it's still their insurance, you're still taking the liability, yada, yada, yada. But if they're short of funds for whatever it would cost to clear their part, and then they could contract with whomever they wanted, to Mike or whoever, just a thought, because it still would get the job done, and then the liability wouldn't be, or the responsibility wouldn't be on the town? I don't know.
I don't know. I guess, the other thing about it is, I guess we'd have to add it up, out of the number of feet of sidewalk, how much of that is town property? The total.
You mean the front of town hall?
Common and town hall.
Firehouse, library.
Well, the common might not be town either. Depends on where the, it could be state.
No, no, but it's frontage on the town. Right? I mean, I guess, to put a fine point on it, I'm talking about frontage. The library.
But you said the libraries pay somebody to do the sidewalk.
But it's the town.
I've done it, and I know others have done it too. It seems to be on the laws to do it.
Well, it's been very consistent the past two years.
Well, last year, don't you know, the last, the two years prior to this year, they came out of the library and just went towards Mary's. You had to kind of walk up that driveway to get onto the sidewalk to get into the library.
Yeah, right.
And this year, Mrs. Pike and we did ours, so then they made it right straight through. Twin Pines.
Well, my understanding is Twin Pines is contracted to do the library, so they've done the sidewalk. They haven't done the drive up to your place.
You know, we're talking about part of the sidewalk.
I think, well, I think Twin Pines is going from the post office...
All the way.
All the way, which is, because they've got, two or three houses in there.
Yes, ma'am. You've been very quiet.
There's so many places where they concentrate on making things anti-Catholic accessible. How does that apply to town government?
Well, you can see the money that was spent here trying to keep God up, right? With lifts and having access and so forth, so. So it certainly doesn't exempt us.
But if it's... If it's inaccessible for, like, me to get to the library or to the hardware store or church, that's not handicapped accessible?
Well, I mean, that, you know, we could go to say, everybody keeps their own place open. I mean, we could do whatever every other community does. And then say, if you don't have it open in 36 hours after a storm, somebody can come and slap you with a $75 ticket.
That's the other option.
That's the other option. It wouldn't cost the town a lot of money. It would actually probably give us some more local receipts.
If we can afford to pay it.
What's that?
If we can afford to pay it.
I mean, that's not, I mean, that's not reinventing the wheel.
No, no. It's not the direction I would like to see it go, but...
It would be interesting to know how it is that Conway come up with, "You know what? We're gonna do this." How it is, I know South Deerfield does their own walks.
Jelton Falls.
Yeah, how it is that the towns come up with, make the decision, "Okay, we're gonna do it," or "We're gonna make..."
I bet you would see that in the tax rate. Conway's had some great luck passing two and a half overrides.
And another thing, I think, that bears on this heavily is speaking to town council and saying, "Look, what is our liability here if we do do it? What is our liability here if we don't do it?" Did I just say "do"?
That would be good to have in front of us before town meeting. Have that information.
My bet is we'll have that before the end of the week.
Great. Great.
Even though the town voted that they were three-season sidewalks, not four-seasons.
Well, see, I can't find that it was voted, but it was in the discussion, so...
Nonetheless, if I owned a property on Main Street and I didn't clear my sidewalk, and you come along and you slip and you fall on it, is it still my sidewalk? So am I responsible, because I'm the homeowner, that's my sidewalk? I didn't shove it, you slipped down the snow, the ice, whatever was out there. It's not the town's, but somebody's responsible for it. And we just maybe have never asked that question, because that's up to each home or each business, whatever it is.
I thought it was state law. I thought they had just passed it in the last 24 months. Am I wrong?
No, they have, they have, but we have three-season sidewalks. So...
I'm only gonna follow them in those three seasons.
Yeah, three, three seasons, well. And that was, I, that was how it was handled about 12 years ago, when we had them put in three seasons. Then winter, we don't even have to talk about winter. Sidewalks don't exist in winter.
I just think that the first time somebody really gets nailed by a car is not gonna be with whatever we discussed.
Oh, exactly. I agree 100%. Well, a good discussion. I still go back to a cooperative community venture. If it's contracted out, where the highway department could come in is if they could help us have barrels strategically placed on both sides of the street and Tom Poissons' crew could make sure there is the sand there to spread it. And then it's up to the people walking. It's up to the people who live there to occasionally go out and sprinkle a little sand. So then everybody is taking some responsibility.
And maybe Mike's idea that the first year since the cold frost has been known is you, you spend until the $5,000 is gone and then you have to stop because you didn't appropriate it unless you get ahead of it at a special town meeting and put some more money. But it needs to be ahead, not after the fact. I mean, we would wanna be spending $3,000 and say we're short of three. You'd wanna know if you wanted to spend an extra three or not. So you could stop on the sidewalk or snow throwing or whatever.
But again, we, until we get the answer from town council about whether or not we have to stand and salt or whose responsibility or who's liable for what, we have a lot of decisions for not, right? And we should have that answer before we even would say that $5,000. It should be a lot of it, right?
Yeah, the, if the town was to take on the responsibility, those folks that are doing theirs now would probably do a whole lot less, right? If somebody else is gonna come through and just do it anyway. I probably, Benny, you were...
Well, I just want, I don't know if this is relevant to the discussion, but Water District got notice a while back. And it was from the state reminding everybody that you have to keep anti-Catholic access and you have to keep your sidewalks and your entryway clear of snow and ice. And that is a state plan, that's nothing town. So to my mind, and I've always been for keeping the sidewalks open, because I do, through this town, I walk. I don't bring my car. There's no place to put it if I do. To me, it's a liability to park it and I'm next to a great big snowbank. So that, you know, I, I've always felt all these years, back since 2002, and I voiced my opinion then. You should have sidewalks that you're only going to use in the summer when it's safer to walk in the road. Right now, it's not safe to walk in the road. It's not safe to walk on the sidewalks. But I have, and I follow. But I'm not a suing person, so I don't sue. But there are other folks that that's their first spot. Oh, wow, I'm gonna sue somebody. Doesn't matter whether it's homeowner, the town, or whoever, they're gonna sue somebody. But this was a state mandate, and it gets reinforced every year. We get continual reminders that we're supposed to keep our sidewalks clear and our entryway clear, because we don't have to worry about it, per se. We have to keep the hydings clear, or Mike does. But Harry, you know, because we rent, he takes care of all of that stuff. Of course, he gets in trouble with the historical society, right?
See...
Because he doesn't have any place to put his snow. That's the problem with downtown, is there's no place to put the snow or very few places to put the snow.
Which would make it difficult for a few people, especially between South Street and Meadow Lane. A lot of, a lot of those smaller houses that are up close to the road push their snow right onto where, and they don't have a whole lot of places where to put it. From, not much from the pizza place on down past Brian's is tough. The library area is tough. A lot of people don't have a lot of space to push snow. So if we did this, we'd have to, we'd have to say, look, people, it's your responsibility, you have to find some other place to push your big piles of snow. And some of that's the town pushing snow on top of them too, so...
The state.
No, the town. This, when the town opens up South Street, I mean, the construction South Street. And when the town opens up at the bottom of Norton Hill, when they come down Norton Hill, they sweep right around the corner and they push the pile right up on the lawn of, where are we? Yeah, the lawn of this white house, this yellow, yellow house.
Yellow house.
This yellow house here, they sweep it up on there. Which, I'm guilty of it too. Out there in front of Elmer's, there's not a whole lot. I plow Elmer's Park a lot. There's not a whole lot of place to push snow out there. Now I'm trying to push it the other way and push it up onto the lawn of the house on Norton Hill, because she owns that, so I can push it across the street, which I'm not supposed to do. But there's no place to push snow. I try to make spots. They also push up into where I, I cleared brush and clear open, opening on the other side above Norton, the house.
Well, just, just so you know, sometimes out in the country, amazing spaces, right? People still have a hard time putting snow where they should, you know? They gotta put it out in the middle of the town road just so it can freeze up and become, has a problem.
Does anybody make an apparatus that instead of blowing the snow, they're pushing it as you go along, it just melts it, it's gone?
Yes, definitely. It uses up an awful lot of natural resources.
And it makes a flow.
Then, then we would need to get pipeline and... All right.
Thank you.
And we exhausted this. I think, I look forward to the discussion and, you know, we'll try to figure out a way to make these numbers come out the way they need to, but...
Well, it'll be interesting to see what other people think about it. It is an active village.
It's a little bit different comparing six tenths of a mile of sidewalk to 85,000, 85 miles of road as far as the investment in a grader or a snow blower. I bet we can find an argument that's more suitable.
It does, since I moved to town, and what was that, 17 years ago, 18 years ago? The town does seem, the village is getting busy.
It's very busy.
And I think, I think, I think the good point in here is that there's such a shortage of parking that when people come to the village, they have to park so far generally from where they want to be. That they, they need to use their pedestrian car dodging skills. Ted, do you have anything else?
No.
No, I think I don't. Okay, give us something, give us something to work on.
Okay, thank you. No?
All right, thank you. All right. Why don't we... Ted, do you have anything on the budget? I mean, I've got a couple of different items here revisiting these totals. You have the new worksheet dated 4/7?
I do not. So you're, you're leaving those kind of felt fast out of balance that I was on my last...
Because there's been an adjustment on vocational again?
Has there another one?
Because the letter came Friday, was it?
Yeah.
And that, and that's on this one dated, this one dated 4/7?
Just after I sent out the one...
Oh, that's the additional student?
No, they said we got the tuition letter from Smith, which...
Oh, tuition interest?
Went over the 4% best.
Richard, maybe you need to go, go back to teaching?
Yeah.
Because since you've retired, it's like a lot more students wanna go to Smith.
I just keep trying to keep them away, but now they're gone.
If you can imagine, it's a quarter of a million dollar shift from one year to the next.
It is a lot of money. On the other hand, you know, it's gonna give the town trace people that are gonna, you know...
Move out.
No, no, but...
Trace people don't usually move out. They, this, this, to get you an option to move.
What, what we're looking at is 320,000 to 575,000.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Quarter of a million dollar swing is a huge swing. But it's how we chose to do it.
It's, it's an expensive education, but it has a good voice. But we need to do it.
Yeah, the graduates are in the yellow pages.
The one, the one thing I would ask is if you've got any time, what do you need? If you wanted to look at that two-page draft I gave you, if that's the kind of thing that would be useful. And it may not be finalized, but I'm just trying to... One of my reasons to come tonight is to see if you had anything that should be offered by way of amendment or a major revision. I tried to capture what I thought to be the facts of the matter that confront us, you know, highlights in the budget and how we're struggling to make this all fit.
Should we take, should we take this off?
You can put that off till, till...
I was gonna say, we know it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to say, even if you looked at it tonight, it would be great if it had come back as an agenda like the next week when we're having our meeting.
That's fine.
To officially look at it. You're just looking for, are you on the right track? Is this what we all had in mind?
Fine, and you could even just send that to me by email if you wanted to, or something like that. Doesn't require a discussion as such, but if you had a chance to view it and come back individually or something like that and say, less of this, more of that, or this doesn't work, it'd be helpful. That's all.
Okay.
Now, I've been having to bring this to you.
Yeah, no, I'd like to, to read it, because what we're looking for is this, if you will, the big-ticket items that are making the changes that are significant in the budget versus last year.
Right, and I realize also there's been a revised or correction to the, the school expenses, for example, or one of those dollar amounts is incorrect, so we need that changed.
Eric?
I guess it's sort of a technical question, but we have, does it review FY15 budget? Do you have annual town meeting discussion review schedule? Isn't something like that part of the discussion of all the things we're doing for the budget annual town meeting as opposed to a...
I think we'll take this up and then we'll put it on the agenda, or the budget, because that's when you wanna polish, have more of a final draft of it, right?
Yeah, for what?
For this, next week.
Yes.
Because it's about getting this in the newspaper.
We've got time to get it in the newspaper. The bottom of the thing, you see there are some deadlines, but they're not until April 26, 28, something like that. So there's plenty of time. And if we took this up next week, would maybe a better draft than this, but...
Let somebody put on a change.
Why did I think we had enough money for the Sanderson thing for cleaning?
We did for the study. We don't have enough to actually do any work.
Okay, so maybe that, when you guys get there, maybe that just needs rewording or a misunderstanding.
Yes, yeah.
It sounds like an extra nine for the study. And what we're talking about was the nine was putting the anticipated repair.
What was it?
Because I think we already had money to pay for the, our portion of the study.
But we need to put some, we're hoping to put some extra money in, so if things were gonna move quickly. I mean, we have no idea what it's actually gonna cost.
It's in anticipation of the repair, yeah.
How about $9,000 to help fund needed repairs? Something like that.
And maybe you wanna put something in there that we won't know the full amount until that study's done, but we have the money for the study.
I think you have most of the salient points there.
Okay.
I mean, you can get too far into the weeds.
Well, yeah, I know. And I don't know how much detail to hop her up, but I think the gist of it is that there's a lot coming our way, that's all. Yeah?
Number three for Sanderson.
Yes.
It just says over a 15-year period. They talked about that, but I thought they only gave us figures for five years.
Well, they gave us two tables, Paula, as I, as I read it. I think I've got it right. For the first five years is a certain amount, you know, per year. And then there's a 10-year schedule below that. So I take it that the next 10 years will have a different figure. And what we're budgeting or being asked to kind of address right now is the, is the financing of the first five years of this effort.
I read that differently. I read that as if you paid it in five years or paid it in 10. So I should have...
Look, they gave us two options. And it's up to the school committee to choose the option.
Have they chosen? I mean, the warrant, the warrant I read said five years, but...
Right, and that's why I said I thought that covered all of that.
We have a choice.
The graph they showed, there are two tables.
Right.
There was a five and a 10. I mean, they're gonna undertake the project, those projects listed in the five-year period. And then they're gonna choose if the towns are gonna pay it back in five or 10.
Oh, well, I'm going Wednesday night to get this clarified. I guess I, I wrote it on the fly and I just, I thought that was their intent.
Because I thought there are items that are yet undefined. They're just giving us the first five years for repairs. And then there's something else.
Well, I don't, I have us in the first five years.
Yeah.
That there was a quarter of, that first five-year set of projects.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like it was a quarter of a million dollars, but it may have only meant 240,000.
Yeah, yeah.
To repave the parking lot at Mohawk.
Yeah.
Now, I went this weekend and drove in the parking lot. I drove in all the parking lots.
Yeah.
There is no one in... There is no one in this room that would like to have their driveway in a quarter of its good a shape as those parking lots are.
Especially this month.
Yeah. So, you know, not that I have an issue with having a nice smooth place for kids to learn how to drive.
So-
Or ride a bicycle.
So you said you're going to the meeting so you can find two, two in terms of the law.
Yeah, I certainly will.
But you, I do remember, but they said they choose whether we pay it in five or ten years, not us.
So how do we put a vote to the town? You just give a blank check?
Yeah.
For it?
To pay our, to pay our portion of the capital.
But we're gonna put that into a debt exclusion, is that right?
Right, it's a debt exclusion question.
Yeah, we need to know the funding.
But just like the way we do when we borrowed for the grader, we didn't tell them if we were gonna pay it in two, three, four, or five years. It doesn't say that. It says that we're making the obligation to pay a set amount of money.
Well, is it-
We didn't say that we'd pay it over three years. We didn't say we were gonna pay the grader in one year.
Well, then how do you make any kind of projection for the taxpayers about what this might represent as a way of-
That's why they elect the grader minds.
Which is who?
You and your crew.
Me? I wouldn't lean too heavily on that little finger. I make up most of mine, because I'm sorry.
And I try to get mine from my fading memory.
There you go.
If, if we happen to know what's coming off of the debt service that's gonna be paid off in terms of an item, whether it's a town common or a truck or whatever.
Yeah.
Maybe it would hurt to include what it is, because some people remember from several years ago that you, you know, so somebody's gonna raise their hand, well, what is it? So, I suppose we put it in here, and we heard-
I can add that detail.
Right, if you want to.
In general, it's, you know, don't break down everything that's-
Well, I mentioned that some eighty thousand dollars is coming off of debt service.
Right.
And so that means that we're in effect rolling over debt service to pick on these new, new items, but it's a fairly modest increment of new stuff.
And we, you know, we took off quite a bit this year.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, okay. All right, I think I've got enough for the marching order to go forward.
So-
Thank you. Any more?
I think that would be helpful compared to last year, for people to be able to see some details in the paper.
And especially to be able to get it out.
Right, right.
Well, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Paula, you don't mind if we group ten, do we have any ideas on how we're gonna manage this at this point?
Well, I'm going back, I wrote this in this little blurb, which you may or may not favor once you hear it again next week, but I made, I made the assumption that in some respect, there's a certain elegance to taking on this town dump truck, that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and taking seventeen out of stable exhibition to then represent to the town that for a three-year period, fifty thousand dollars a year pays the balance of it all, is kind of a debt exclusion. The math of that is kind of neat, and I think tidy, and easily communicated, so people kind of appreciate what we're doing. And, but going into stabilization account then starts to invite the question of, well, what else would you go into the stabilization account for? And given this big disparity between what our projected budget is and what we've got by resource in free cash, free cash is not gonna be able to carry it all, and in fact, if you keep fifty thousand, that's a, you know, approximate number, left in free cash is kind of an emergency reserve, which I think is the prudent thing to do, you really only have about a hundred thousand dollars to work with, and that's not gonna pay the hundred and eighty thousand dollars in balance we're talking about. So it invites the question, why would you go into stabilization for that? And my, I guess my reasoning is, well, you could do that if you want to buy everything or pay for everything that we've been talking about without further cinching it down and trying to take some stuff out of cost containment. And it would lead to a reduction of our financial reserves, both free cash and the stabilization fund, to about eight and a half plus percent of the total budget, which I don't think is disastrous, but it, it kind of veers away from what we've been trying to do is build up some reserve here. You can argue that every one of these things is a good cause, the radial coverage, the steeple repair, all these different items. The vocational education amount in a week or so, we might learn is better than we thought, but that still looms as kind of the biggest budget buster we've got in front of us right now. And even if we're able to save a few thousand dollars on the fuel purchasing approach, that's not gonna be nearly enough to reverse that. What we need is better news in terms of final enrollments and stuff like that. But I don't think it's likely. So I guess at this point, my, my view would be we go back through the various expense items and just kind of get really a little tougher to ask, do we need to spend as much money as we've got in the bank for some of these different items? Maybe you don't put nine thousand dollars toward the retained, well, maybe you put five thousand in there. Maybe you go back to the steeple. I didn't, I was not part of that discussion at all, so I'm guessing you're off-base in this, but do you need to spend a full thirty thousand this year, projected eighty-five thousand? Could you spend twenty and still do some good? The damn thing, you know, you can always say, we could back away from that, but then again, that's an avenue toward getting potential grant funds for actually doing construction. It seems to me a sensible thing to be doing.
Well, we need, we need to do more to get grants.
Yeah, but I, but I think, you know, we ought to pick off here these items and say, do we need to do that? Even go back to the highway and say, you need as much as we put into that general highway, take a few thousand out there. And I think you could do with some trimming and stuff like that, a little bit of cost containment here on the budget proposal, to see if we can't tighten that down a little further before we talk about going into stabilization. But I think ultimately, we might have to go into stabilization to kind of get some of the stuff.
The thing in my mind, I realize, we're trying to do now, and I'm talking about two years from now, but I'm thinking of that now. And it's worrisome in that they could come along and say, you must do this, that, and the other correction, and it's not something you can do over five years, it's something you've got to do right away. If it was a substantial sum of money, let's say a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which isn't huge, it could be two hundred and fifty, where would we get that from if we suddenly had to do it and there isn't a grant? Does that end up, the stabilization would then-
I think that fits the case for maybe a two and a half override effort. I don't know, or another big debt exclusion. Two and a half maybe is a bit drastic for that. Because it's kind of, it's a one-time event.
Because it's, it's almost like it's inevitable that it's coming, that something's going to happen there. Whether we have a grant or not is the unknown part, but I think it's pretty clear. It's costing seventy-seven thousand dollars for the study to tell us what has to be fixed.
Right.
It's hard to imagine that the study at seventy-seven is gonna come back with smaller money. I think you're following me. I'm just anticipating.
Oh, I'm thinking about it, and you know, from our prior discussions, that that is something that frustrates me to know when, is the studying and studying, when it seems like good people could scratch their head and say-
Right, but without the study, you can't get the grant, so you have to hope and get the grant. But I'm just worried that if we don't get the grant, where is that coming from? And the only place is either free cash or the stabilization. And so, as silly as it sounds, is there something else that right now we should be using stabilization money for and leaving free cash free, more free cash free?
Here's me.
Just the idea.
Right, this is me throwing mud at the wall.
Yeah.
Stabilization by definition is to be used to stabilize the tax rate. When you have expenses that are driving your budget.
Yeah.
It's to try to keep the tax rate at some relatively easy clip.
Right.
And of course, two and a half keeps us there anyway.
Yeah.
But with what looks like now such a huge increase in vocational. If we took that one line item, just that one line item, and took the increase, one-third of that increase would be about eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And took that out of stabilization.
Yeah.
Saying that this is gonna give us a year to adjust to this increase. And we don't know next year, will it continue to increase? I mean, if we've got five kids that are graduating, you know, it could plane off or even go down a little bit, depending on, but it seems, it's trying to manage the-
It could go down.
What could be unmanageable if we didn't have that.
That's right, that's right.
And if we did that, and I just took that as a third figure, and that was a jumping off spot. Then you could take the seventeen thousand for the truck and take that from, from-
Off of free cash.
Off of the free cash, you know, we could adjust that back and forth. But I think if you're gonna visit stabilization, it's kind of good to go to one account to visit that.
Yeah.
And that would be an account that, well, we all know, right? I mean, this, this would be an easy budget year to do a lot of really cool things if it wasn't for that increase.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, how, I mean, if it was four hundred thousand dollars for vocational, it only went up eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It only went up twenty-five percent, right? That'd be about a twenty-five percent increase.
Yeah.
We could manage that and fund this other stuff and not think about the difference.
This is huge.
Well, we wrote the budget letter out of some belief that we were in a pretty strong financial situation. This was a year in which to address a lot of these things that, you know, we thought would, you know, here and there improve things. And then I think we got knocked sideways by this one big item that simply materialized. And I don't think, you can't, you can't walk away from it, you can't defer it, so it's gotta be handled. And I think there's a pretense to, as you say, select one item to go visit the stabilization account.
And this would be one account that-
Yeah.
Is blowing our socks off.
Right, and we can do a little forecasting. David's got an itemization of how many juniors, seniors, freshmen, and so on. So you could make a little projection, of course, not knowing what next year might bring by way of new students coming into the system. But once you've got an idea of how many freshmen are coming in, how many sophomores, you got some basis for talking about the attenuation of expense with seniors, graduate, assuming they stay in the full four-year program. But I think that's, that's a prudent way to go about it. I don't know.
I think to make next week work.
Yeah.
If these numbers need to get polished up a little bit more, I mean, I don't know what else to polish on. And I, I really feel like I'm fading a little bit, so I don't want to get into the weeds on it tonight if we can help it. But I wonder if we should send this by email? And we have something a little detailed, so everybody thinks about it before we get here next month, so we can-
Do you want to give this spreadsheet?
The one, right.
No update.
Just send that. I mean, David thought maybe by the end of the week, we have something.
Yeah, we're meeting, we have a vote committee meeting, we'll play film tomorrow, so we'll have a chance to talk to the other towns. It looks like the other towns are not having quite the influx as we are. On the other hand, it also looks like we may have one at the end of this year that we weren't coming so far, coming in men. That's just-
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna try to have our finance committee next week at about six o'clock, proceeding, meeting with you by now. And that might be particularly good time to introduce this idea, having distributed this, to say that, you know, there's, there's an approach that we might consider in consultation with you all.
Although times are desperate, is it possible to visit? There are certain stipends being paid for certain boards. Is that something to visit that we might want to make? I'm thinking there's the select board, the assessors, there's just a couple of them that have higher numbers on them. Would we want to, if, you know, if money's that tight and we're really worried in some areas, is that rational to maybe make them half of whatever they are now?
It could be a source of some relief. That is, we, going back a few years when we were up against it, I think our finance committee met with the select board, and I think by dropping all stipends for the fiscal year, I think we came up with, I'm gonna say eight to nine thousand dollars altogether. That is, nobody got a stipend for at least one year, save somebody.
Some stipend should leave alone, like the dog officer and stuff like that. I was thinking of the, the boards.
It was like, yeah.
The access stipend.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying if we take vocational and, and look at stabilization, that there are, nothing's off the table before we go through it. I'm not, I'm not saying that this is an easy fix.
But it may be a component to think about, yeah.
And I think, I think it fits with the reason that we do it, that we have a stabilization.
Yeah.
But we'll take a two-thirds vote.
Yes, yes.
Did we have to make something out of that?
No, not to, not to take out of stabilization.
Okay.
Or not even to put in. Stabilization, it's a half, just a simple majority to put it in, but it's two-thirds to take out.
Yeah, and that could be going, yeah, town meeting, you don't have to go on the back.
Yeah, I do think, if there's some wisdom, being a pessimist.
Yeah.
About what our future financial situation may be.
Yeah.
To take some out of stabilization on the front end and not underfund other accounts. You know, instead of cutting winter roads, instead of taking out-
Yeah. Do you think by next week, given the discussion that was held here tonight, that we could have any kind of view from town council about this liability issue, which I think continues to lead its way through these discussions about winter roads?
Yeah.
If we're liable, that's significant. If we're not liable, that is also some significance.
Like, if you do nothing but your liability and do something, do you now own it?
Yeah, my impression is the minute you put a shovel, call it the town shovel on the sidewalk, you bought it on liability. You may not have had before, I don't know.
And Mayor?
Hmm?
Tomorrow, you contact Donna on this, and why don't you contact our insurance carrier?
Who?
Our insurance carrier.
Oh, yeah. M-I-A, or whatever that is.
I think that, that would be two perspectives.
Yeah. I mean, the insurance rate, well, the insurance rate might spike for some reason, I don't know. And that's an intended cost that we don't think about, you know? Or maybe they say, if you're gonna start shoveling sidewalks, we're gonna start nicking you for real, you know, what we're charging you now.
Or since we've never been responsible, well, maybe we're okay because we've had part of the sidewalk where we did in front of the town properties anyway, but you just want to make sure you do have insurance for that.
We never paid a penny for what Mike does, that's our volunteer.
Yeah. But you're also right in this trial business. I mean, I say it on one hand, and there's a certain, you know, the, the, there's a certain kind of limitation you, you offer up by saying, this is just gonna be a trial. It doesn't work, we're not gonna do it. But the minute you do a trial, if people like it, it's really hard for management to turn around and say, guess what?
I'll take this. Two people come in and say, we use that so much since you've done that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And I think, I think Deb Nipson brought up a very good one.
Yeah.
Is that once you open them up. Is that, once you open them up.
Yeah.
Where does ADA and some of this other stuff fit into that?
Right. Well, based on the state, you know, more mandates for towns, of course.
So what I, well, I guess what I'm looking for is if we could send an email out Thursday or some such thing that the select board or the finance committee really take a look at this, refer to the petition, you know, let's come in hot, heavy to nail this puppy down.
Yeah.
So, sorry, are you saying that we'd like to see something go out during the evening after the discussion of two vote committees?
Right, right. But we'll talk about the general, talk about the petition, you know, the general budget that we've got.
Yeah, I think we need to see the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet's important here, as well as maybe a draft of the... You wanna have a draft of the warrant yet or not?
No, I think...
Just a spreadsheet.
I mean, we're gonna be talking about the draft of the warrant here in just a minute, but, you know, that's just figuring out where to throw.
And you have a very early draft, but just the numbers in there are not really settled here, so.
The spreadsheet, I think, is the thing to have in front of people and say, look, this is not working yet. What are you gonna do about it?
Paulette, what? In this email, should we say, I mean, what do you think about this taking stabilization for that one chunk of...
I think, like you said, it's easier to do it if you just do one thing that it leaves up to make them vote two-thirds for three things.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, the spot that's got the little spike beside it.
That needs to get shaved out.
Either the school or the dam. Maybe it's the dam. That's a one-time cost to do the study. That's another option. As opposed to the school. Instead of making the school be the heavy for the stabilization, it could be the dam. And the dam needs X amount of dollars to do this study to find out the cost of the repairs. That's clearly one time. Where the school, it could be the same issue next year.
We have a better fix on what the school consequence is, as I see it right now. I mean, we've got, the way we're judging right now, we can afford this study if we provide the funds of this for year fifteen and talk about it here. But we don't yet know what the construction costs. That's probably gonna be a half million dollars, I'm just guessing.
On...
But the school...
On the school. On the dam.
The dam, I'm certain it's not a dam.
Yeah.
But the school, that's like a quarter million dollars right now in front of us that we're gonna have to pay.
Right.
As I see it. And I think that may be the better way to go about it.
The only thing I'm worried about with the school is it, it's, it raises up the technical schools.
Yeah.
That they're somehow a problem. And that's not fair, which is why I was looking for something else to be the one issue. And so I was going for the dam, because it's, you can just start saying it doesn't happen anymore. Because otherwise, it's getting, well, why are we doing this technical... It just elicits a whole lot of conversation, and it puts the onus of a problem on our children. To get into the stabilization, we need this, I don't know. It just feels uncomfortable to take part of the school issue and make it the stabilization. So I was looking for something else, unless...
I understand what you're saying. I, I mean, you're gonna have to get so many dollars from stabilization. I mean...
Somehow.
Somehow. And I think we haven't found a way out of the arrangement we had. I mean, last year, with the reduction in vocational, we were very happy.
Yeah.
You know, and this is, now the pendulum is swinging the other way.
And I think a couple of years back, the budget for the school was higher. I seem to remember it being closer to four hundred. And then we had a whole bunch of free cash, because we didn't use it. So we tightened up the numbers, and now it just swung the other way on us.
But, you know, I really think, I mean, every year we take up projects, right? We take, we take on projects with the dam or, you know, paying out, I mean, the vocational, the reduction in vocational education last year was a huge factor in us being able to put two hundred thousand dollars into stabilization.
Right.
That was probably a driving factor. That was, that was a hundred thousand of it right there.
And you're in effect, kinda recompensating, because the vocational has swung the other way, so to take some out of stabilization and help pay for that, maybe, there's a certain synergy there, if you want, in terms of logic. Vocational schools helped us this past year with the stabilization account, and now we need some of the stabilization to kinda help.
I think Paulette brings up a good point. I think, I think the savings in stabilization is what gave us the entire two hundred thousand. One of them was from the fiscal year previous, and one was from this fiscal year.
I just...
You know, that was, because like you said, there was so much left the prior year.
Right.
And conceptual, it's right. I'm just uncomfortable putting, making that vote on the heads of students who have opted for some of the technical schools instead of going to Mohawk. Because Mohawk's not inexpensive either, but that number just kind of, I mean, I've seen it a couple of times, you know? One point whatever million, everybody goes, okay, but we could get logged down in a lot of conversation, who's going and why, and how come. I'd rather find an issue. Maybe if it has to be two, maybe it's the seventeen for the vehicle, and it's the sixty-two or whatever that, I'd have to look, whatever the number was to do the dam, even though I agree with you, one would be better than two. But to get something that's not related to the children, that's all. It's kinda just...
That's an alternative.
Now, check my thinking. But if we have, let's say we have an extra ten students.
Yeah.
I'm pulling that number.
Yeah.
An extra ten students not going to Mohawk.
Right.
That are going to vote.
Yeah.
In the next fiscal year, won't our assessment reflect a portion of that? Is it a five-year average?
It's a five, it's like a five-year average. So in a miniscule way, it might, but, but you're, it's gonna take you probably three or four years to see any real impact of those students that are going to vocational schools from Mohawk.
But, but don't you see how in our formula, there's a stabilization already built into our Mohawk formula, that we don't have a way to handle in our vocational formula?
That's, that's true. That's true. Yeah. It's just, it's the same, it's almost like the mirror of the winter roads. Winter roads that go up and down, up and down, until now, where it sort of averages down and smooths that out.
Well, try and make it just goes along the front end.
Yeah.
Well, we can discuss that, but...
All right. Yeah. All right. Good, good question.
Yeah.
You got anything there?
Well, Ted is here, that Michael, how do you like to meet, if possible at all, before a town meeting with members of the select board, members of the finance committee, to do a walkthrough at Sanderson? In part to talk about what else buildings might be used for and some of the options there to consider. I initially asked if it could be after annual town meeting, but the answer was that they wanna do it before town meeting, so that it can be part of the discussion at town meeting. I have a couple of dates that were suggested, Tuesday the twenty-seventh at seven P.M. or Wednesday the twenty-third at seven P.M. Or the afternoon of Thursday the twenty-fourth, or, or any time, Friday the twenty-fifth. And since it would involve both boards, or at least some people from each board.
Could you give the times again, Mary? The twenty-second was...
Twenty-second at seven P.M.
Yeah.
Twenty-third at seven P.M.
Yeah.
Fri, uh, let's see, the afternoon of Thursday the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And morning or any time during the day, Friday the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are definitely out for me.
And Tuesday, twenty-second.
Thursday?
We may need that.
No. But, to be honest, that whole week, I don't think anybody should count on me. The weather breaks at all, I will be up to my ears in a few years.
So Tuesday the twenty-second or the twenty-third, seven P.M.?
Oh.
Either of those works for me.
The twenty-second or twenty-third at seven P.M.?
Yeah, the twenty-second at seven P.M., we may need to reserve.
That's, that's another question. The twenty-first, we were talking about signing the warrant.
Uh-huh.
That's Patriot's Day.
Uh-huh.
That's a legal holiday.
In the state of Massachusetts.
Is it in the state of Massachusetts, or is it just Suffolk County?
Massachusetts, the full state.
Massachusetts. It is, the full state. I hope it used to be just Suffolk County.
No.
There's another one that's just Suffolk.
The twenty-second and the twenty-third could work for me, but neither the twenty-fourth nor the twenty-fifth.
How about the twenty-third? It's, I think we need to move our selectmen to the twenty-second as well.
You're gonna move selectmen to the twenty-second?
I think we should.
So we're talking about this for the twenty-third?
Right.
Okay.
At Sanderson?
Sanderson.
Twenty-third seven P.M., Sanderson.
Yeah. I'll get a touch with finance committee members.
Wayne?
Yeah, this is just a thought. I've been sitting here in your budget. We have a Fred House phone for this board.
Fred Cross.
Thank you. You know what I'm saying, basically, we should look heavily at that for the town. The last time I heard, it was pretty heavily in cash.
There's about fifty-six thousand dollars in it, if my memory's correct.
My point being, I have seventeen thousand off the budget.
The thing with that, Wayne, is looking into the details, I think there's a limit to how much you can draw from that, like a lot of these accounts, you're only supposed to draw a portion of the interest in it even there. But we can look into that. That's it. We have not applied anything to Fred Cross yet that I'm aware of.
I know. And that's, kinda looking at it and saying, I know you can only lose the interest, but there's fifty-six grand of interest in there. Then, even if you're gonna only take a portion of that...
Fifty, fifty-six thousand is the total balance in the town.
Uh, across general account, isn't it forty-seven, seven?
Because we took some out?
Um, about four thousand two hundred for town committee?
There's forty-seven, seven now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I understand.
I stand corrected.
Right, you also. But, you know...
I've normally got off by twenty-five, seven.
Maybe the seventeen thousand has to come off the budget, and whatever you can take from the Fred Cross goes in its place.
Yeah, that's a good offset. That's a good offset, yeah.
We gotta, we gotta do something here. A lot, and I don't see any place, frankly, sitting through all the one night long discussions. There are very few places you've got to wiggle. You could wiggle this year, but you're gonna have to wiggle like hell the next year.
Chances are. Okay, Ted, thank you. Thanks so much for coming in.
You're welcome. Sure. Thanks.
So we could definitely have an item for next week's agenda, and we need with the finance committee for this newspaper.
Right, right. All we had last week was on the agenda, Ted said he drew it, so that was a little bit of a discussion.
Right. Do we have anything else you and I are doing on the budget? We're done with that, right?
This?
Yes.
Yeah, started backwards.
Right.
What's this animal control officer thing?
Um, it is, uh, more, like, permission to the board to make calls on, uh, late dawn phase. He asks for about this time of year, then...
They start getting one. Now, really, the dog piece are collected by the town clerk. Is the town clerk in agreement with letting the warrant go?
Yes.
Or... So all it takes is a motion and a vote?
Yes.
And I moved to authorize the animal control officer to pursue, uh, any, uh, any passed due, God bless, ten days.
Second.
Any old discussions? All those voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye, with your man.
Yes. And act, uh, let's see. There's a letter that says it wants a reply about next year's CDBG funds by April eighteenth. However, I talked to MJ this afternoon, and she said it's fine if they don't give them us till after end of term.
Oh, okay. Well, let's put this back on.
Because this is...
Later.
This is the one we're doing with the four towns versus last week, we were doing the... No, this will be, next year, we have...
She already wants to get started on...
The next year. Gotcha. After end of term.
There's a letter that gets a honey.
Yes, it's, I'd say...
That could be.
Something that knows, uh... Chapter nine, the apportionment for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen is provisionally two hundred and ninety-seven thousand eighty-six dollars.
Is that an increase? We don't, you haven't compared it to...
I was gonna take a look today.
That's to be the number to know.
I know.
Somehow it's... Somehow I get two hundred and eighty-five thousand on April last year.
Two eighty-three or something like that, yeah.
Which would mean that would be a five percent increase, right? Five, seven percent increase.
I was going to ask you, my center, a press release, actual receives four thousand eight hundred twenty for loss of control and the safety efforts. This involved the police crew, there's equipment. Fine if this goes out?
A press release for the camera?
Uh, yeah.
I don't have a problem with this advertising. It's always good to advertise. You don't have a problem with that, do you? Anything else in your mailbag there?
Uh, and then, I guess the question is the warrant. Can I go through the mailbag first, but if we link back to the warrant?
Yeah, we can come back to it. We're gonna... It's nine o'clock, and boy, I'd really like to be out of here by, it's ten minutes of nine, I'd really like to be out of here by nine-thirty, ten o'clock. Don't need a late-nighter tonight. I avoided having really any problems all winter, when I could've stayed home, and now when it's getting busy, and I'm... Right?
Yeah.
I can't. Now I can.
Well, Mary's looking...
It's all ours.
Well, Mary's looking something up. I went through this latest statement of our budget versus actual there. There's a couple of places where we've run into a negative number again. I thought we had going to have, I forget exactly which one it was, but the finance committee was going to have some...
Two of those accounts, and I don't think those have caught up to the other account.
They haven't, the account hasn't put them in yet, okay. But then a couple others are popping up, and it's only a few cents, but I know it can't say negative. So we'll probably have to get them the easiest ways to do that again for some of these, to clean them up.
Especially with very small amounts like this one.
Right. The biggest one, the town common principal, is negative almost hundred and forty-five dollars. There's another one, twenty-four cents, and that seems like that might be an easier way to clean all those up through the finance committee. Okay.
Yeah, that's...
Well, for this one, this one's pretty good. The health one.
That finance committee.
Uh-huh.
The reserve fund?
Right.
They have, nothing's come out of that yet. So that's how I know that those adjustments have been made. That finance committee?
Uh huh.
The reserve fund?
Right.
They have nothing come out of that yet. So that's how I know that those adjustments haven't been made.
Right, yes.
Are you hoping something, Mary, or you just want us to get through?
No, uh, let's see, do you, do you need to, um, have mentioned that you're about to, that the select would receive two emails, um, about the internet proposal?
Yeah, I know, I just, I got one today.
One today and there was one on Friday.
Right.
And we had one last Wednesday too, I think it was the third one.
No.
Last Wednesday?
I thought so.
You've been wrong. Maybe I've got the date wrong. Maybe this will.
Yeah, but I can check and see. Uh, George was April fourth, Friday, April fourth.
Maybe it was before that. Maybe it was right after May twentieth. Some may have it wrong.
Um, so.
Right after May twentieth?
Yeah, I think, March.
March, March. Who's a man, mom?
Uh, two thousand and fourteen Meals on Wheels Walkathon is scheduled for Saturday, May third, two thousand and fourteen. From eight A M. to eleven A M. They'll be busy. I'll put up the information on the board over there.
Yeah, let's not scare people working town meeting. Or give them an excuse.
Two pairs of sleeves, two people in there.
I'm reaching for the warrant.
Yeah, and then there's, uh, there's a letter. From Steve Kulik to Housing Community Development, supporting the, um, four-town community development block grant, uh, Keith and Laveed.
Okay. All right, let's kind of go over.
What were the other two then? The, the Keith Ashfield?
Chalmers.
Chalmers?
No.
Um, Keith Chalmers, Holly Ashfield.
All right, so you've got these articles to add. I guess the town clerk decided she didn't wanna change the caucus date. Is that why that's stricken? Or is that in here?
Oh, no, it's taken because it's already in the body.
Okay.
Those were just, um, questions to begin with and where they struck there something in already.
And then, uh, an exemption for, to have firemen on the volume to fire department that are seventy or older?
And that's something that, um, has been, has been raised, um, by our fire department a couple of times, but I talked to Dell and that's something we can do a little later. Special town meeting and need some research, right?
It does need some research.
Yeah. You would think so unless you, you know, if you say that you would like it to go on there, um, I could see about pushing it forward. It's just I know it's a law for it and so it's also possible to.
Well, I don't see the treasure that often, but I heard it three ti, I've heard it three times that they're not supposed to be.
It's always nice to have it on the annual town meeting if possible.
Stick it on right before the fire department, would it? And how many, should look and see how many articles there are to begin with, aren't there? There's thirty-two at this point. I, you know, if there's more research to it than we can get on, I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, so let me take a quick look, see how quickly we could come up with something if it looks like it's gonna get complicated.
I mean, I gotta believe it, that it's an exemption allowed by the state if we voted, correct?
That is correct.
You know, so it's probably referring to the mass general law and. And then the Asheville House Lean, that's not in here yet.
No, no, I have no language or even direction about that stuff.
Well, we voted that. I mean, we, Paula and I voted that that would be in this law.
Oh, that's right, you did. Uh, any suggestion?
On the wording?
Yeah, or you could just talk to Ted and tell us something?
We voted to do it. We didn't necessarily agree we should do it. We just voted to include it as a warrant item. I'm just saying, we had a different opinion, but we agreed.
That it would be on the warrant?
That would be on the warrant for annual town meeting. As opposed to the board just making the decision at that knee and back and fall.
You know, I agree with you. That was your argument, right? Is that it needed to be on a town meeting?
Right, right. I'm just saying, we don't necessarily agree that we should forgive the lien, but that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand.
We agree that, we agreed to put it on.
No, but you got me by saying town.
Yeah, yeah, we know town meeting.
It's hard for me to fight with town meeting.
Let me see if I can come up with some language and then I'll bring it back. Let's hope.
So we need to make room for that and, um, I don't think we're anywhere near having a Hilltown address proposal.
Understood. That would be premature.
I think we're anywhere near that.
Okay, now I might have thought that I heard that at the public meeting, but it.
I said we could go there.
Okay.
But I, I wasn't thinking about annual or.
It wasn't harder than the paper on it though.
I don't know what the article on paper said.
How much they, how much they plan to take in Curtis? You're talking about the animal thing?
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the putting the antennas up here.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, you thought you meant Hilltown Annual.
Yeah.
So no, if we can get that exemption wording and then we can get some wording on this Asheville House Lean. So Article One.
And there's something in that draft from Ted. At the end, we have something that'll be helpful.
So Article One is the regular election stuff, including the three ballot questions. Two is to report to the town office.
Three is regular, um.
Sales.
Four is regular, uh.
That's short-term borrowing, right? Two town officers, the town treasurer.
Yeah.
Article Five.
Now, I don't, I don't have real numbers in here in terms of how.
The highway track numbers on Article Five, singha.
No, I'm saying these are not real numbers. This is just a blank one because I don't need to reach into the system. But we wouldn't need an article, so it's a placeholder.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you actually use the numbers from, from last year's grader. I think these two questions on school probably should be early because, um, the superintendent here. Does that make sense about all the questions?
So that, that's a good location, is to, yes.
And at this.
Right in here, where they are.
Should have that discussion pulled out here, right?
Yes.
And he's, I think that he goes to Plainfield, right, when he gets done here, so. So that's, that's where the slide goes in.
Either before or after all the other school.
Before.
Now, where's, oh, there it is. Location, so the dog number is.
Yeah, no, good, the numbers that are in the lines here, I haven't bothered to change them because they're gonna keep changing.
Sure. So the location was in six.
Which, and these numbers will change as well.
Moving things down.
What's eight about? I thought that was, isn't that one that's scratched off? Or is that because it's been built into Article Eight?
I mean, you're talking about Article Eight, yes, it's numbered.
The dog license fund.
Yes, that is, um, that is a quest that town clerk has made happen on the warrant.
I'm catching up to you, Paula.
As is nothing. And ten.
Town clerk truly get carried away.
So she's looking for some wiggle room when to hold the town caucus?
Yes, our, we ran into trouble this year. Our laws narrowed it exactly, um, to a specific day, day, whereas town law, it's a little bit of room. So we would just be, that is, uh, this is written so as to change it to M G L language.
So this Article Eight. You're seventy years old. You're seventy years old, you don't have to buy dog licenses, or you don't have to be charged. You still have to get the license.
You still have to get the license. You still have to provide the information, but you're not charged.
Is that something other towns are doing, which is why we're doing it?
Yes.
How about change that to Act Fifty-three with that A A R P card?
Nah.
You saw what I was trying to get at, I know.
You weren't.
No, 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 that was too obvious.
I don't know.
Now, why seventy?
Yeah, that's, that is.
Now, that's the acts of two thousand and twelve.
That's this chapter one ninety-three.
I remember the year I decided I'd get my father his hunting fishing license. I was so thrilled with my thought. Rail up to Holly to get it, but for Christmas. I was free. Cause I was saying.
Yeah, your heart was in the right one. Hey, major.
I said, oh dear.
So the, the big one is Article, uh, Ten, which would separate annual town meeting from election. From local election.
I have a problem with this caucus changer that makes things more flexible. Do you, Paula?
No. Yeah, it's too tight.
See, the town will change the date of the election of town officers and other matters to be determined by ballot from the first Saturday in May to the second Sunday in May.
Monday.
The second Mon, I'm sorry, the second Monday in May on the first Saturday in May. So town meeting on Saturday, election on Monday.
No, election on Monday after the Monday.
Isn't that what you said?
No.
Town meeting on Saturday.
Saturday.
Election on Monday.
On the second Monday.
Why are we doing that?
So if it's the third, uh, this year, or the third, uh, the fourth is Sunday, it would not be the fifth, it would be the twelfth.
Why do we wanna do that? We'd end up with two, if you have to have ballot questions, you'd end up with two days.
So what I should say is town clerk would be happy to come and discuss it next week or whenever you like. Um, she's, uh, been, has wanted to do this in, in previous years, a lot of towns, um, not all, but certainly a lot of towns around us do have them on separate days. For example, she's very concerned, uh, with the possible length of this year's annual town meeting and she would have to be both upstairs and downstairs, potentially closing polls, getting votes in. And I believe there are other reasons too with the new election laws coming and how it changes what we have to do prior to elections. The period for voter registration and so forth is being extended. And so she's also looking ahead, um, just to a year from now, um, when the election schedule is going to be very difficult.
But if you already have ballot questions, she's gonna have to be up and down anyway. Because you're gonna have the ballot question probably the same day as the annual town meeting if you're gonna do that.
No, no, you, you would still have them separated. So it does mean you wouldn't necessarily know the result of ballot questions until both parts have been accomplished.
That's how we end up with the highway garage, is they kept bringing the ballot question again and again and again until finally they wore people out in their path.
I don't, it seems like it's making an extra.
Trip to town hall.
Voting day. Cause if you have ballot and you have the election of officers and they're on two different days, you've got two things instead of one. And you might not get as many people voting. I mean, when they come for the annual town meeting, they're here. So one would think they're inclined to go vote while they're here.
Well, I remember, I remember it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but it was probably twenty-five years. Up until that point, at an annual town meeting, the polls were in the same hall as the town meeting. But that's when people knew how to behave themselves and they could quietly go through and, and all you'd hear every once in a while was, then. Another angel that's one.
So this article is very important to town first and so I'm sure she'd be able to either come discuss it with you or something else.
I think she better come next week and discuss it with us so I have a better understanding of what it is.
And it also seems like it changes the day and right now, with the voting being the same day as the new account meeting, that any new people newly elected start the next week. It would separate that a bit.
There are some towns where they had elections before, so it's telling me how uncomfortable that is.
Because you have random board members who didn't go through the process.
I was always wondering why they won't affect it for July one, that you, you belong to a fiscal year, not the day, two days after the election.
So I'll put on the, uh, I'll ask, uh, town clerk to come next year.
We want a detailed, but brief.
Yep.
If she wants to email something in advance?
Oh, that'd be great too. That'd be great too.
To us and the finance committee, I suppose.
Okay, so we're gonna have ambulance again. That's good. Reserve account, we're gonna have that again. Article thirteen. There's nothing special for the sewer, right? So this Article thirteen is, as it's. This was a special project for the sewer, so that's out. That would give you a warrant.
No, it's not a, no, this is, you know, I just got this from Betty.
Oh, I thought this was.
This is, if, if I'm confusing you, this, this warrant is.
Modified.
Largely amounted for this year's warrant. I didn't change the numbers and sometimes the language where I knew it was gonna change. So I didn't, I hadn't been plugging in the new numbers and the.
But this ten thousand dollars, they didn't put that in their budget to us.
No, they didn't, but they, they just.
So I'm assuming that Betty brought it in and the sewer commissioners are behind it.
Oh, yes, yeah, that came in last week.
General Doherty. I'm gonna figure out on this Article fifteen what goes in there.
Before we move, any of these, just from a prior year when I had asked the accountant to tweak the name of an account, she told me whatever was on this warrant is what the names of the accounts had to be. So any place where we have, have this conversation about salaries versus stipends, if we wanna make that fix, it needs to be in the warrant so that the next year she will adjust the account names to match. We just, so if we see something we want changed, we gotta have.
Elected select war salary should be stated.
If, that's what we want it to be. But whatever you put there, that's exactly what she can then use for the accounting. she can then use for the accounting.
And as you'll see on the expense report, actually, both warrants get dropped, just a select warrant.
Article sixteen.
On, yeah, on sixteen, we've got to make sure we roll that, get rid of that utilities, and just have fire department expenses.
Thank you. In, in the end, before I finalize the warrant, I will hope to have a budget spreadsheet that's close to finalized, and so that I'll be able to.
If you're really getting them, you're not going to.
So for example, fireworks, back to Article fifteen, back to Article fifteen, fireworks town hall, Capitol, if, if you don't want to put anything into that this year, then I'd take the line out.
Right, we're good.
Zero, and leave it there for the future.
We've got to make a decision on that. Then you had it, then you knocked off the top shelf.
The top shelf? With tea?
No. Cultural recreation, I guess we'll have that again.
And eighteen is in italics, because you had a letter from the history project. I don't have anything specific, so.
There is the letter.
I believe.
We did it last year.
Right, but I believe you had a letter of convenience to go and add, actually. I'll go look to see what we had, what we had on the problem, so.
That wasn't the time Dawn and Phil's came in, that was two months ago.
Right, well, this was totally expected.
I didn't see that.
Okay. And I will find it, email it to the board again?
Where did we take that money from last year? Grant program income.
Yes.
Well, let's look at that letter. They figured two thousand dollars again in that letter, Mary.
No, it was ten.
Whoa!
Because they wanted to print a book.
Whoa!
They need to do the books.
Whoa! We'll get a question on that one. We'll have to figure that one out.
And my memory may be faulty, so I'll find the letter and I'll send it out again.
Mary, after you tweaked this the next time, I wonder, maybe you already did, if we, not only back to the select board, but to the finance committee, if you get to make any changes before we get together next Monday?
On what?
The warrant. If you make any changes to this before next Monday.
Well, I haven't sent this out, because it's, it's so partial, that it would only create confusion. So I will bring it next week, because we still won't have everything plugged in.
Right, it would be nice if, if you could email it in advance, like, I know usually you're probably not here on Friday, so if Thursday night I was.
I was here this Friday, I was here this Sunday, so.
Oh, right, well, I, I was just saying, but, but, I was just trying to get it before Monday, that's all.
Right, Paula, they, they need this.
More than they need this?
More than they need that. They really don't need this until we sign it, right? Because sometime between we sign it and town meeting, they will meet and go, Article by Article, let's wait. It's always been done, anyway.
Okay.
So when we sign it, that's final, and then that'll go, the numbers are going to be off of this.
Okay, all right. It's, it was with the, of extra holiday coming and.
I know.
The clock ticking, I thought, the more people see in advance, the.
You can see how much I think about the holidays. I didn't even think the paper today was upon us yet. Twenty-four for health, twenty-one for highway road.
Anyway, some, a quick point, some of these that, that have been nailed down and are not going to change are in here, but it's in red on my computer, I've pulled it on my computer, so I know which have been changed and which haven't. So if you're looking at it, you may in some cases see that it reflects this year, and in other cases, no.
I'll tell you what I would do, is this one, you've got twenty-five for sewer enterprise.
Okay, which, twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
I would move directly behind that, the one for the boiler.
Yep. Yeah, placement is absolutely easy.
We'll take it all to you. Makes sense, Paula?
Put it right together, yeah.
Oh, let me also bring up one other thing. Usually, we've tried to keep, at least the budget items flowing the same way year to year. It makes it easier to look and compare and so forth. But Doug Field has raised the question of whether the senior center could be moved up higher than where it is now, because Kathy will be going to a number of town meetings. So that one is.
Maybe Kathy should call and tell us what her perfect rotation would be.
No, we're going to call her when it appears to be reasonably close to coming home. Instead of having her come at seven o'clock or nine o'clock, at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, but she, she'd probably have some schedule where it's more convenient for her to start. Right? I mean, we don't need to be calling each other very carefully.
That way, for that day. We discussed this, uh. We can, we can. We just recently discussed it since that information.
Maybe since I got the request, correct?
Okay, so I'd be glad to try to check that out, but I, I think the important thing is that we've made a decision. We'd call her, and if she was available, she'd come. Otherwise.
If she wants to.
See how bad your warrant is going to have to be for length and all that. Will Doug's give information?
It's, it's not beyond, I mean, we have a procedure where if she couldn't get here until two thirty, and that article came up at one o'clock, we could just set this aside and then come back to it.
Yeah.
But if, if she has a preferred way to do it.
Yeah, understood. Forgot the picture.
I don't think you have to worry about twenty-eight. I think you can take twenty-eight out this year.
I was just reading. Well, if, so, if just for example, our money was withdrawn from the stabilization account, that would be as part of the vogue.
Or part of whatever account comes out.
Or whatever it comes out with. I mean, whatever it's removed for.
This is the exact wording of this Act of Community Rights Resolution?
It is absolutely the exact wording.
It's unfortunate, there isn't a way to convey that money is being encumbered, like the personnel board, they put in for two fifty, and since they didn't spend the two fifty, it's being encumbered, but I hear it's a zero, because it's not a new two fifty. There's no way to concur, convey those things that are being encumbered and moved forward. It's not like they don't exist, it's just handled differently.
Well, that is quite a mouthful, that. Community rights resolution.
I wonder. Should, is there any desire to put on thirty-one or thirty-two at the beginning instead of at the end?
Oh, my God.
Well. Not everybody returns after lunch, and if people thought it wasn't important enough, maybe we should take them up sooner than later. Just a question.
I know, I know.
Otherwise, if this gets, it's going to take a while, it'll be four, five o'clock, and.
Maybe on the second day.
What second day?
When we return, maybe, four o'clock. Take them back, on a Monday night. You know, that's, that's a good discussion for a full board. My personal situation, my personal opinion on that is that we've been working three months, four months on this budget, and it ain't to be taken up. I think if we get that extra mouse meat in there, and see how big a job it is on that firefighter, then I think you'll have it all. I think you'll have it all.
That's good.
Excellent. Anything else we can pick up tonight?
Only that I had some phone calls before I could get here, and I followed up with them to check.
Okay.
And given a conversation we had, was it last week or the week before, with the fire department, I had some concerns for the Ashwood House Apartments property. From what I understand, what I was told, Kachina heard the propane tank hissing, and the smell of propane went down to Bronson Ave. So she called, I guess the people that service that are called Dead River. And she called them, and then she called 911, and fire department, I believe Dell and Phil promised they'd came. The part I'm concerned about is having gone through everything they went through with carbon monoxide. The person from Dead River showed up maybe a half hour, forty-five minutes after the phone call, and when he got out of his vehicle and went over, it was hissing again, and he immediately said, get everybody out of this building. Don't start any cars. Don't do anything that's going to make something happen. I just have a concern that perhaps with everything going on, maybe they should have been evacuated by virtue of our fire department to get them away from that propane, instead of waiting for Dead River to make the call. And if I lived there, given all that happened with the carbon monoxide for December to March, I'd be a little anxious, too. And fortunately, Kachina heard it, saw it, smelled it, she was outside, and followed up on it, but it sounded like it could be dangerous. So although in the long run, everything that happened, that should have happened, happened, I believe it didn't, in my mind, happen soon enough. So it's just a concern.
I had heard about it this afternoon, and what I, the only action that I had taken is that I called Robert Churn, and she had already, she, she sent some people up to make sure things were under control, and that she understood it. I think you got a copy down in the email that she sent, and.
I didn't get to read it before.
And she said, I think there's two emails, and she'd already contacted the phone with the gas inspector to make sure they came and checked it out again.
After the repair?
Yes, yes. So if that happened tonight, or if it's going to happen tomorrow, I don't know. I don't know. Similar thinking with enough was probably enough, and I'm sure, I'm sure they're thinking exactly the same thing.
Right.
But I haven't even, I haven't even been behind the building to know how close that propane tank is to the building. I'm thinking it's on the other side of this parking lot, but I may be wrong.
I believe it's near the building.
Is it, is it near the building?
I think it's right up behind the laundry room.
Oh, really? So I'll take a walk.
I'm also told that Dead River apprised management, whoever that may be, that, it's about two to four weeks ago, that there was a valve problem that needed attention right away, because it was dangerous. And I think it should have been tended to sooner than wait until today was another issue of something that's made people once again afraid to live in their homes. And those are their homes. I'd be afraid of it's mine one.
So you've got the carbon monoxide, you've got. Could you just say the name again? You said someone apprised.
A Dead River.
Dead River, oh, Dead River.
They had a Dead River let them know that, whether something got frozen or damaged because of snow and ice, I don't know, but somewhere two to four weeks ago, they informed the housing people, and I don't know exactly who they talked to, that that had to be fixed, and it was dangerous and needed to be done right away. So perhaps they waited too long and didn't tend to it right away, and that just brought about one more issue today, fear and concern for where people live.
No, I think, you know, certainly propane is nothing that.
Yeah. Well, I guess that I even said, don't anybody start a car. Don't, don't turn on the dryers and the.
I, I really think we'd have a better idea when we have information from three or four different angles to kind of put the whole thing together.
Just cherry.
No, 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 that's fine. You know, there's, it would be interesting to see what all the stories are when they all come together, you know? I mean, I'm sure Dell, I'm sure Dell, I mean, I'm assuming, I should do it, I'm assuming Dell responded.
Oh, yes.
And our most private, our private property, please. Going by.
Does it read?
It's written.
No, bro.
We're pretty close. I appreciate it. It's nine thirty-three. Anything else special?
No.
Motion to adjourn? I'll make one.
Second?
Okay, all of the favors stay at that time? Adjourned at nine thirty-three. Adjourned at nine thirty-three.